Welcome to the planning board meeting of March the 16th, 2021. We'll do a roll call. Andrew Dale?
Here.
Andrew? Okay, Tim McInerney?
I'm here.
Tim's here. Dan McInerney?
Here.
Hudson Van Sickle?
Yeah.
I don't think Paul Sandbridge is here, but if he is, speak up.
He's coming in right now. One moment. Okay, he's here.
Okay. Paul, you're here, right?
I am. Sorry, I had trouble logging on.
That's okay. All right, we can get started. Dr. Renita Wachowski has applied for three signs at her professional office in home. She has a freestanding sign that is five foot by two foot. She has a window sign that is 12 inches by 18 inches, and a facade sign that's 24 by 18. The building department says this is all good, so there's no problem with it. If anybody has questions, ask them now. If not, someone can make a motion. Any questions?
Did we see the signs? I'm trying to see if I saw them or not.
Joanne, you sent them out, right?
Yes, you sent them out.
I'm trying to share the screen. Can I see it?
Yeah, I can see it. Thanks, Rob.
I'll scroll down to the sign.
Yeah, turn the page. That's the sign. I think the next page has the wall sign. You know, a couple pages. Okay, there's the wall sign that says office. And then there's one.
The sign in the window, okay?
Yes, yes. And then there's the window sign, which is in color. That's the window sign.
And you're gonna put the phone number in, I guess?
Yeah, I have Verizon coming tomorrow, so I have a reserved phone number, but they don't give you like 100% until they install.
You're my neighbor. I live right around the corner from you.
Oh, which corner?
Past Bagel Train up on Mansfield Place.
Oh, in this blue building?
No, no, no. It's a private house. It's a private house. It's all right.
Okay.
Okay, any questions on these three items?
No, not by me.
No.
Someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to get through the signs as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't move. Now, Ms. Dr. Wachowski, you go over all the building department and get a permit to put these signs.
Okay, yes, yes. I'm going to do it once it gets warm, because I'm planning to open on April, the beginning of April, so I still have a time. But I can't contact right now the building, yes?
Yes, call, make an appointment, and they'll set up so you can get a permit for the three signs.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too. Take care. Bye-bye. Thank you.
Okay, next is enter and point.
So, I can leave the meeting, yes?
Yes.
You can leave the meeting.
How can I leave this meeting now?
Take your time.
There it goes. Hey, can everybody hear us?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we're here today to, as a continuation from the February meeting, and we have provided some information of the facade of the stone wall.
Okay, you mean the stuff that was going at 20 to 4 this afternoon?
Oh, yeah, I dropped off a sample this afternoon, but it was just a repeat that I dropped off last week. And we submitted some materials in a share file link this afternoon as well, just images.
I have to turn off anyone else's.
Wait a minute.
You have them?
Yes.
I saw them.
I saw them too.
Is there a picture of the stone adjacent to the existing stone? The stone you're proposing, like sitting next to it, the current stone?
Yeah, part of that submittal in that share file was the stone across the street.
Yeah, there's none for us to get low. It's just for the right. It's just across the street, Salvation Army. There's none going up the street towards Gitlow or further up.
But you're proposing a stone, right? Proposing a stone in lieu of the stone that was removed. Is that what I understand?
Correct. That would be the number three image in that share file link. It's by Silk City. You'll see the photographs. Looks like somebody's.
Is that the granite?
If you scroll down. Yeah, exactly. The granite field stone. There you go. See, it's three proposed Silk City.
Yeah, I have a question before we get into the stone color. Is this going to be put on cement board and then the engineered wall, or is this individual stone?
These are individual stones, and they'll be adhered to a concrete wall with cement. Correct.
Good.
Good, but to me, but is there any chance you could take that sample and lean it against the wall that's there now? So we could see how the match is? Or has someone in the planning board gone and seen, compared it?
I haven't taken it up there because we just got it this afternoon. But I've gone up and down Lafayette Avenue twice this week. And I just believe that this particular stone has far too much gray in it and not very much brown in it. I was looking at on the brochure you gave us. I was looking at either the mountain, Brick Town or Lehigh. And you will have that on the board. Take a look at that.
Those number two, are you referring to names that appear on the Silk City brochure by chance?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay, gotcha.
It's Lehigh and Brick Town.
Yeah. I can get that.
Seems like you almost have to get three samples, three different ones, lean them against the current wall and just see which one is the best match.
To our eye, we thought the presented one, the granite field stone, if you open up those images, there's three images there, number two, wall across street. There's three of them there. And to our eye, we felt that granite was, because it is so gray across the street.
But as you go down or up Lafayette Avenue, you have sections that have mostly gray, you have sections that have gray and brown, and if you get to the top of Lafayette, it's mostly brown. That's why I think some brown stones should be mixed in with this section of the wall. Doesn't have to be a lot, but there has to be some brown in the wall. Any other comments from anybody?
What about the Buck? You got a section up there for the Buck Town, which was probably the closest to blend in. I mean, I did walk the walls. I was curious. Are you gonna take the last part of that stone wall off as you enter into your lot on the right side, or is that staying?
To the right side. That would be going. On the right side.
So this would all then match whatever we pick?
Correct.
Go ahead, Tim.
Now, I was just curious, because I walked in and I thought that Buck Town would blend in with the rest all the way down. It's gonna take a bunch of years for it to get like the rest of them.
That's true. They're weather.
I thought the Pennsylvania was a little bit light. There again. I walked the thing. I did put it up against the wall. I went up to the monastery, did the same thing. So.
You put the brochure against the wall?
Yeah, actually, I took the, no, I, yeah, it was on my phone, so I held it and made it large enough to do it. And if you notice the walls going up, they're dark. You know, they got a lot more. There's no light stone in it. Let's put it that way.
Yeah.
Could I ask, are we comparing the wall that's to the right-hand side of our property in front of Esther Gitlow? Is that the one we're concerned about matching? Or are we more concerned about matching the one across the street?
No, we're not interested across the street.
You'd rather match the one that's to the right-hand side of our property?
Yes. I would. Let's hear from the other guys.
I agree. It's meant to be a continuous expression or relatively continuous, so I would think you'd match the one on the same side of the street. And I just, I've actually picked quite a few stones like this in my life, and it's always surprising how different the samples are from the brochure. It's probably better to provide samples of the three or four that Kim and Jim picked, and then we can all go out, or someone could go out there and lean it against the wall and just see which is the best match.
As far as the texture and the shape of what we were proposing, is there consensus on that? That's a good question, yeah. As far as the profile goes, are you happy with the texture and the shape of the stones? Do you feel like those are? And to be honest with you, we chose these shapes to match what's across the street, because they're such a large, they're very large, and then there's very small ones. The one that's to the right-hand side of the property in front of Esther Gitlow, the shapes are more. They're not the same shape, but do you like this shape of the profile here?
I don't see a problem with the texture at ease.
No, it all comes down to color, I think.
Yes, color it is.
They seem like big enough that it wouldn't be misplaced as long as the color.
With brochure slips and physical samples. You got it? So.
Right. What we can do is, we can get you the physical samples in the different colors that, you know, closest to match, what we think is closest to match the Gitlow stone wall, and get it to Joanne, so that you guys can go out and tell us which is your preference.
All right, why don't we, the board, why don't we draw that on two samples that we'd like them to bring, and then we can go out and put it against the wall and take a look?
So essentially, it's down to color now, right?
The blend of color, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I think Timmy and I, I think Timmy and I are inclined to the Buck Town. Does anybody else have another?
What was the first one you mentioned, Jim? You mentioned. Why don't we get both of those? Let's get both of those and lean them up against it. We don't waste any time.
No, no, I don't want to waste time either. How does everyone else feel?
Fine.
With you, Jim.
How about Danny?
Yeah, the shape is large and small. As long as I keep what that mix is, I think it's gonna be okay.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with those two at all?
No.
No.
I think you're talking Buck Town and Lehigh. Is that the ones, the two?
The Lehigh and the Brick Town.
I think it's Buck Town.
Buck Town and Lehigh.
Sorry, Buck Town. I'm mispronouncing. It's Lehigh and Buck Town.
So the Pennsylvania is not in the mix anymore? Okay.
I don't think so.
This is the granite that we're showing here.
The granite we're showing is Pennsylvania, no?
No.
No.
Okay. Different color.
But they're looking at the granite.
They are looking at the granite. The granite is a new color.
Too much light in it.
Right. We chose the granite because we wanted to be so gray with the wall across the street. Can I just ask one question, then? We were trying to do the concrete cap and the fence on top. This was an interest of the owner to match what was across the street. But if we're matching the wall that's adjacent in front of Esther Gitlow, there's no fence there and no concrete.
That's fine. Just do the wall where the engineering had it to begin with. And also, Tim, we had another question, right?
Yeah, they wanted to know when you go all the way down the straight, when you get to where the telephone book, are you gonna curve that wall in a little bit?
Where the tele, I'm sorry, to the lower end?
As you're coming down the hill. Just at the end of your property, that would be the left side. Are you gonna curve it?
I don't believe that returns into the property there. It terminates pretty much in a straight line.
And then that wall is just gonna be blocked?
Right. We have an end cap that we're showing there. But it should be it should just be a continuous wall, horrible design with the end cap, the way it was shown on the site plan. Is there a preference on your end?
Yeah, we'd like to see you curve it towards the telephone building. That would finish it off as you come up Lafayette Avenue.
Sometimes engineers want a cap on a wall so water doesn't get into it and cause it to freeze and break up. The wall that's there has a mason. I don't know. I wouldn't be opposed to a cap if the engineer needed it. I don't really have a preference either way, but does anyone else? Is anyone else opposed if the engineer thought we needed it to keep the wall intact?
Yeah, I think we're talking, are we talking about how the wall terminates or the cap?
The top on it. I was just coming back to that point.
We wanted that because the owner wanted to match the wall across the street, but also I think it was for ease of building it as well. But if we're if we are matching the wall that's adjacent in front of Esther Gitlow, it would be stone on top without a cap.
Okay, all right. That's good, then. That sounds good.
Yeah, it should still be stone, as it is all the way up the line.
All right.
So are you gonna curve into that telephone building slightly, maybe three feet?
Curve it. I can look at, I think there is a slight curve to it as it is. It just doesn't return, so to speak, but I do think that there is a little curve. I'll have to look at the site plan to see how that's drawn. If it's not drawn like that and it's straight along the sidewalk, you'd say you'd like to change that design a little bit and curve it in?
Yeah, just finish it off.
When we bring up the samples, we'll propose a detail.
Okay, when can you get us the samples? Because I don't want to be the one to hold you up.
I think I can get a sample end of the week, early next week for sure. So we could review that before the next month?
Yeah, I would rather get the okay to you as soon as we look at the stone.
That'd be great. That would be great.
Well, do you want to have a quick meeting, Jim, then, last week in March?
Well, what I'd like to do, if we can all down here and look at the two samples, we can have a decision right there.
Well, you kind of have the open meeting situation, so.
Well, we're willing to approve either one of those stones. Can we do it that way?
Yeah, but Jim, the thing of it is, is with the stone, a picture is one thing. The piece that they're bringing you, you can lay against the walls and actually pick them to which one you want, because Lehigh is a little light.
Yes, Lehigh is the lighter of the two. I realize that.
I'm just saying, procedure-wise, you really shouldn't be out there and picking or voting, you know, just when do you think you'll be out there? Next week?
Well, as soon as they get us the samples.
When do you guys think you can get the samples?
I think I could have samples by the end of this week. I'll shoot an email out as soon as I have them, and I can bring them to the site immediately and leave them in our trailer. And whenever everybody's ready to be there, I'll just bring them out in the trailer and lean them against the wall.
Why don't we set a meeting for the 24th then at at 5:30 just to do the approval? Because you can't just vote out at the site.
All right, all right, we can do that. But I'd rather you, I'd rather you bring the samples to voice vote, because we may go there on a Saturday if we can all get together.
We'll get into Ms. Jaffe. That's not a problem.
Okay.
Can I just ask you, there's images here. See the house? That's this product a different color. It's a lighter color. Oh, not the.
Yeah, it's very gray. Yeah, they're very gray.
There was another house image there.
Yeah, there's a that one down below.
Yeah. Is that too brown? Is that the Chardonnay? Sorry?
That's all brown, though. You're gonna go all brown.
And then there's another one there. You see that house image? This is the product installed.
Yeah, there should be a one. This image is not too clear. Yeah, there you go. It's basically gray. Oh, you talk, I got the.
That looks pretty good.
There's a lot more brown in that one.
Yeah. I don't think we want to go all brown. We just want to have a mix. It looks like very small stones, too.
I'm sorry, say again.
They look like they're very small stones.
No, those are the exact same size. So that's an identical profile to what you've seen. It's just a different color.
I can see it now. I think, I personally am good with the two that we asked for. But we'll go around the room. Everybody good with what we asked for?
I'm all right with it.
Yeah, you have to wait till I see it in person.
Absolutely, absolutely.
If you felt strongly and wanted to order this one too, I wouldn't be opposed. They'll probably send it to you for free.
I'll get as many as I can.
No, 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 no. Just get the three.
Definitely the two that you asked for, 100%.
All right, okay, so if that's it, then that concludes it, Nathan. Then end of the week, beginning of next week, we'll be back. Okay, so thank you for your time, and we'll get you those samples as quickly as possible, so that you can let us know what your decision is.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you kindly.
Oh, before they go off, you're gonna put this on for next Wednesday, the 24th?
Yes, we said the 24th at 5:30.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
To meet on the 24th of next week to the zone. At the, what's the address?
That's 176 Lafayette.
176 Lafayette Street.
Yeah, but when do you guys want to meet? That's the meeting. When do you want to look at the stone?
Well, they gotta get it.
5:30, I thought, is when you want to.
No, no, that's when we're gonna meet with a decision.
Oh, I thought we were gonna meet on the site and pick it right then.
Well.
If you can do Sunday, Monday, or Tuesday, I guess would be the or Saturday if they have it.
Why don't we wait till we get it, and we'll shoot an email out, and we can figure out when we are gonna meet as a board?
Okay.
I think, Paul, you'll probably have a problem if it's during the week, correct?
You know, I'm working from home now, so I probably could pop out if I don't have anything conflicting. I could do Sunday, though, if you want to do that, whatever works for you guys.
Okay, we'll see when we get it, and then we'll try to get a date that's good for everybody. So you made a motion to meet at 5:30 on the 24th. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Jim.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't move.
You guys.
Thank you. Next up is Esther Gitlow.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Zach Ham, engineer for the applicant. We were last before the board in October. We received a negative declaration as well as an actual amended site plan approval. We realized after the fact that we never received the county GML. We have since received that, as well as gone over to the ZBA and received the necessary rear yard variance for the proposed detached garage. So we're now back in front of you with the GML and the ZBA granted variance to settle for approval.
What is this for? We saw you for a parking lot, I remember.
This is for a garage.
Yeah, so this is for a detached garage. It's 22 by 21, as well as some minor improvements for ADA accessibility.
The garage is not for a vehicle, right?
Correct. It's for maintenance, storage, that type of stuff.
Because, and this came up at the ZBA also, if you were to approve this. Item number four on the county GML letter says following, "Two existing parking spaces will serve as a driveway access to the proposed garage. A vehicle entering or exiting the western side of the garage will have to cross over the immediately adjacent parking space, rendering it useless. The easternmost parking spot in the row of seven spaces must be eliminated to avoid vehicular conflicts between a parked car and garage traffic." So you're asking for an override because you're not gonna be driving vehicles into the garage?
Yep.
You're the engineer, right? Can you bring the plan? Do you have the plan handy? I know we're not reviewing the plan. I just, my memory, I can't remember this garage in the application. It's been a while now.
Yeah, please make me.
Yeah, I can do a co-host right now. Are you a co-host?
Yes. Can everyone see a plan? Okay. So the detached garage is going right over here on the rear, kind of in the rear yard of the easternmost parcel.
We have sound effects.
Yeah, I muted it, Dan. I think it was coming from him.
Do you have an elevation of that, Andy?
We do have a picture. Yeah, it's a prefabricated.
I see.
Yep.
And Rob? And my memory is they had enough parking in Esther Gitlow, that, that parking lot was additional parking, overflow parking. Is, is it a parking issue that they're getting rid of those two spots? No, they, this is just, they, they looked at it and saw garage and, and it's like, you know, basically a conflict if it's gonna operate as a two-car garage, but it's not. It's operating as a storage. The planning board overrode it, you know? Um, I think the feeling being, but you guys can change it, but the feeling being, they'd rather just have the parking spot. And frankly, if it turns into a problem, they could always eliminate that spot anyway, Frank, you know? Yeah. Okay.
We also restripped, um, a bunch of parking spaces to account for the two that we're losing anyway. So there's still a net, the parking is the same as it was.
And you have the additional lot anyway?
Correct, yep. Yeah, all of this parking down here is usually pretty unused.
Zach, not that it makes a big difference, but is there like a side door entrance on, on other side of the garage?
No, there's not, just in the front.
Gotcha.
So, so what are we vote, what are we voting on? Well, it'd just be because the county planning letter came in, the first thing would be a vote to override number four. And then just like a confirming vote on the site plan approval. So if they, if you're ready, um, the vote would be to override item number four. Uh, the reasoning being it is not a garage for, um, vehicles, it's a garage for storage. And, uh, the board would prefer that the parking spot remain.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to override number four, um, to keep the two parking spots because it's a maintenance garage versus actually operating as a two-door garage, uh, a two-door, uh, vehicle garage.
Two-door.
Paul Stanford, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then if you just, just with clean damage, you just wanted to entertain a, uh, motion to amend the site plan as previously approved.
I'll make a motion to amend the site plan as previously approved. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All move. Rob, do they have to go back to the ZBA?
No, the ZBA already, uh, approved it.
Okay, so then they're good to go.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh, while I have you, Joanne, for a check print, what is the, uh, procedure and how many copies would you need?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, um, normally we do a Mylar and the, um, six-paper stamp, but Jim, do we need a Mylar on this?
Well, I don't think anything's changing, we just waited for the GMO. I would get one for the, get one for the file.
So a Mylar, six-paper stamp.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Uh, anything else to come up before us? Anybody got any questions about anything? Okay, as soon as we get the samples, we'll shoot out to you that they're available. And you can give a preference for when you'd like to meet and we'll try to work it out as everybody's available.
All right, do you want to set an April meeting also?
Well.
Rob, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So today, an issue came up about DB nacery. And, um, I don't know whether it has any bearing on our approvals with them or whatever we're gonna be doing with them. But they have, um, open taxes up at the town of Ramapo.
All right.
Our taxes are paid in the village.
All right, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, I guess.
Okay, have you got anything in coming from them since?
No, I sent her an email the other day and I haven't heard back, so.
Okay, is she working on both now? Because I don't think she's doing DB.
I have no idea.
Okay.
She did bring it up at the last meeting, Joanne, but I don't know if she's handling it.
No, she was handling, she's handling Washington Muse, I don't, and, and the other, so.
And the other, which is DB.
Right, so.
He is handling both, all right. Anybody got anything?
I got, I actually got a call from Ryo Emanuel's office on it.
All right, uh, listen, I have to jump because I have court at 6:00, I have to call in. Are we gonna, uh, set a meeting for April 1st?
Yeah, April 21st would be the meeting date.
At 5:30 again?
5:30.
I would assume, I hear talk that, uh, this village might think of going live.
Yeah, one of these days, I would assume, uh, this is March, I think we're, you know, those executive orders, if the executive order doesn't continue, we'd have to go live, so.
Yeah, I, I spoke to Ed and he was talking about it.
Yeah, I assume it'll, it'll be at least through April, but they only do it every 30 days, so we don't know yet.
All right.
Okay.
So far after Zoom.
Okay. All right. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Your motion to adjourn.
Make them.
I'll make a motion.
All set. All in favor? Um, all right, okay, we'll be talking, guys.
Hey, Tia, have a good night.